Good afternoon, I'm going to open the special meeting of the Citrus County School Board. Would you like to stand for the opening exercise? I have a back-to-school poem by Bruce Larkin. The first day at school. The first day is the worst day. That's my opinion of school. Things are always seem so confusing. I'm sure I'll look like a fool. Will the kids make fun of my name? Will I forget my lunch? If I don't know something, should I just follow a hunch? I'm not sure what books I'll need. Or what supplies I should bring. I hope there's never a time this year when I'm expected to sing. Do the kids know about last year? When I tripped over a bleacher? The first day of school was stressful. Especially when you're the teacher. My special allegiance.
My special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, before we adopt the agenda, we've got to add a few things. Our WTI Assistant Director. We need to add an addendum to the dual enrollment agreement between Citrus County and the College of Central Florida. And the value adjustment person appointment. With those addendums, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh, we got the agenda with the additions as listed on the agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Business and Support Services, Mr. Blocker. No, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request the Board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined on the bulletin.
Did we change a name that was HM before?
That's how she filled out her paperwork for the resignation. No ma'am.
I see Eric is on here, Eric, remind me, I'm so excited.
Yes, I'm just reading.
We didn't have this on our list the other day.
Going back to his alma mater.
Loves, loves teaching.
And Mr. Bellin, Deborah Oaks from Renaissance, which is going to be a huge loss. Our social worker out there. Is there any thought yet to whether that position will be posted afterwards, or is that still? Excellent. And I wish myself a lot of luck, but I'm going to miss her. Really care about our students. Shit, they're moving out of state, he does a transfer, a Missouri transfer.
Is that Jack Les?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah. I move approval that we accept the superintendent's, I'm sorry, the personnel recommendations for support and instructional personnel.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, and a second by Ms. Powers. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, by the way, congratulations.
Alright. Another one? Ms. Balfour, if you'd come to the front.
This is my husband, Tom Balfour, for 33 years, or hopefully 33 more.
I, Sandra Balfour.
I, Sandra Balfour.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and of the State of Florida.
Of the United States and the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Of the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of school board member.
The duties of school board member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, do we have anybody fill out the green cards, Ms. Balfour? Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to... Back to Johnny Bishop.
I'd like to request the Board's approval of the salary step increases for all staff members for the 2013-14 school year.
A little approval of salary step increases for all staff members 2013-14.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any questions or comments?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
Part of the contract?
What about our non-contract employees? Now we have people on annuals, so it's not the same, we're following that same.
Yes ma'am, they're still part of the barbie.
Right, and why does that become a separate salary schedule this year, right?
That's currently in negotiations.
It's going to be effective for the next.
Of course, as of July 2014. This is the last year.
That's correct.
Mr. Bishop, what salary employees in the district did not get a step?
The ones at the top of the pay scale.
Yeah, the top of the pay scale, the ones that are on longevity.
Okay, executive team?
That's correct, unless they were on longevity.
Okay. Board members?
Unless they were on longevity.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Deutschman.
That's about as good as it gets.
Right. And that was really what I was trying to make sure that it's understood, that steps do not include the board members or the superintendent. So I wanted to make that clear.
And you put down on this exempt support meetings.
By professional tag according to?
Non-union. Right, just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. We need to...
That's new.
It is new, five zero.
Thanks for noticing.
We need to, a motion to accept Deborah Stanley as WTI Assistant Director.
Go ahead.
Deborah Stanley, WTI Assistant Director.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers, and a second by Ms. Deutschman. Do we have any questions or comments?
I just had a conversation with her and said that we still need her, so.
It's pretty much what I said, as she said, I said, you know, we still have a lot of other things we need you to do, so.
I would be happy to do anything you ask.
Well, Ms. Willis first, I was going to say, Ms. Willis might have a.
Be careful.
A good choice, Ms. Willis.
Thank you, I agree, thanks. Wealth of knowledge.
And a big smile always.
Okay. Alright, we have motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clutter?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello. Congratulations, Ms. Stanley, she's leading our department. This first item is actually an agreement between Citrus County School Board with Lakouchi Technical Institute and the Corrections of America of Tennessee in order to provide GED instruction. And Mrs. Willis is here to address any questions that you have.
The instructions to inmates from the Virgin Islands and elsewhere? I mean, I just got to ask.
There is a population out of the jail, that is, the Virgin Islands, and there are people from out of state as well.
Is this from G4S, or is this the adult population?
They're the adult population.
Okay.
And Corrections Corporation of America contracted to them.
Why is we getting prisoners from the Virgin Islands?
When they built the jail, they overbuilt, and they said they housed prisoners from different areas.
And it's funny that they specifically listed Virgin Islands. It's a point of contract.
It's contract? It's the US Virgin Islands?
And Ms. Willis, while I'm very much in favor of educating the inmate population, because there is a tremendous data that shows that they do not reoffend when they do have a high school diploma. Or GED. Who's paying for it?
It's Corrections Corporation of America.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the agreement between the Citrus County School Board with Lakouchi Technical Institute and the Corrections Corporation of America of Tennessee.
Second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
The next item on the agenda is our agreement between Citrus County Schools and CF. And Mark, Mr. Clutter's going to pass out. An addendum, as you all know, that in past legislation, we now pay for students dual enrollment courses, which would have been a part of $60,000 to the district. So myself, superintendent from Levy County, Marion County, met with Jim, Dr. Hennigson, and the addendum is that they have agreed to reimburse districts based on administration costs, other costs where they would give us a part of $50,000 more money back.
Just prior to discussing this matter, I would like to ask and inform the board and the public that I, Sandra Balfour, will abstain from voting on this item, because I don't want any perception of any kind of potential conflict. And I'm doing this in pursuant to Florida Statute 286.02 and State Statute 112.3143. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion?
And just before we, just another question on that, how are we getting the reimbursement back?
In cash.
Small hills.
We're meeting again next week at the other teacher conference myself, and we've had a preliminary conversation where they'll bill us for the classes, and then they'll reimburse us in the spring. Based on the number of students now.
As the enrollment is taken during the year, then it will be the end, it will actually settle up, if you will. If you recall, back in the day, when we actually provided our teachers that were doing dual enrollment on our campuses, that's basically how we did it at the end of the year, and then we would actually then receive the bill. We then sent the bill, it's basically how tides turn, now they're sending us the bill.
As far as also on-campus dual enrollment, because that certainly provides our students a great opportunity, assuming that we can find instructors, which I know has been somewhat challenging in itself for on-campus. Is that something, are we paying the same rate whether they're off-campus or on-campus?
It's, oh, I'm sorry, we are not paying the college for the dual enrollment if we are teaching that on our campus, such as the NC 1101 over at Crystal River High School. If they take it on our campus, we do not pay, but if they take it on the college's campus, then we do pay this. It was 72, that dollar's just to clarify, in the agreement says 72, through the working with Mrs. Hemlin and the president, that is where the addendum comes into play.
Do we have to pay for the course books, the instructional books, though, if we do it on campus?
That is statute, we pay no matter if they're on-campus or off-campus, we pay for dual enrollment books.
And Mr. Clutter, that would be every year on the same.
Right. I knew that, but I just wanted to.
They have to prove instructor as well.
Right.
I have a question for Ms. Balfour, because we're all in this position with the conflict, so I don't know if you've had an opportunity to talk to, there's a part, please send up in Tallahassee that we ask our F4 students.
I call Chris Anderson. I call and talk to Chris.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already checked into that, I saw the agenda before now, and I just don't want a perception of any conflict. Looking at what we're voting on, there is no conflict, but since I'm the chair for the Board of Trustees for the college, I don't want there to be any misperception of anything that would be ethically.
Well, the reason why I mention it is because it is one of the sort of tricky areas of the law, and I remember even a year ago, or two years ago, I was asked to join the YMCA board. YMCA contracts with the Citrus County School System to provide after-school daycare. And so, the conflict was created in being a member of an organization that could benefit financially from the school system contract, of which I was a school board member. So I was prohibited from sitting on that board, and I don't know why it would be different now because we want to pay.
I've already checked into that long before January, when I initially applied.
It's different now because we have to pay, we never had to pay them, so I don't think there was a conflict, but when there's an exchange of money, you're just wondering if there is.
And again, that's why I chose to abstain from this, and it's my position, and I think it's a nice clean.
And there's enough of a reason, and I spoke to Chris Anderson, who's the commissioner of the Commission of Ethics under 286.01, and if there's a proceed contrary to the Constitution, she can abstain.
Alright, I mean, I'm just trying to help you.
Definitely appreciate your concern, because if you have that concern, others may have the same concern, and I would like to get everything out on the table before we begin, so, thank you for.
Well, it's a matter of protecting yourself from any vibrations of the law that the individual self.
Oh, I checked into it long before I put my application in to the governor's office.
Oh, and Mark, I have a comment on this, because I've read the document over several times, it's a mishmash of many different things. On the first page, it talks about remediation, and this is to approve remediation, there are like four different points in the document, and then when you go on to the second page, it says that remediation is not included, you have an exception for remediation. So I spoke with some people about that, I said, you know, it really needs to be cleaned up a bit, so things are, when you say something, it's accurate, it doesn't deny it, and the three page is over. And when I was reading it, essentially, we can vote on the theory that this is what we're going to do, we're going to have dual enrollment, we're going to coordinate with each other, but the document can be cleaned up, to be clear, after the vote. If it could not, then I would say, you know, we can't vote on something that is all mixed up like this, but we can clear it up, and I checked it, and we can, so if you look to that, after we do the vote, to be able to clear it up, and to be sure it reads properly.
Can I just kind of talk about the process that we go through? The college actually communicates with our department probably in January, February. Gail Nobles is our coordinator for special academic programs, and dual enrollment is one of those, and so she sits down with both, sometimes Mrs. Alagretta sits in on that meeting, myself, Mr. Simon, and we basically work collaboratively, because there are three districts that are in this agreement, and that is Levy County, Marion County, and then Citrus County. So that is when we actually start our process. We've had a little bit of delay with this because of the legislation that you are very aware of, about the change in that FTE, that charging of the credit.
And Mark, because of now this new cost, and I appreciate that CF has tried to step in to offset some of that, but I go back to, what can we do to offer more of these courses, you know, at our campuses? You know, there was a time when we had anywhere from, you know, five to six courses at each high school, particularly at Citrus and at Crystal River. Are we looking to do that, can we look to do that?
Yeah, high school principals go through that process on the interview, I think you know Mr. Culbertson, Mr. Culbertson was a worked, we've had many teachers, and through attrition, Mary Calvall just actually retired as of last year, again, Katie Casper, am I correct? These are all teachers that we've had on our staff that have actually retired, and so bringing in those new ones that have a master's degree specific to that content, so, again, kind of working with HR and the principals and recruiting, that is our focus, to try and maintain that personnel in our, to be able to offer those courses. But, again, one thing, Board, I just kind of want to remind you of, is that a couple of years ago, and Dr. Gettis knows this, that the state of Florida did actually start to create a line item for the allocation for the instructional materials for dual enrollment, I will tell you, and Mrs. Nobles will back me up on this, we pretty much expend that money well into the first semester. I mean, it's just, and then we have to go into the remaining allocation that we have in schools. High schools do run an inventory of those materials, and work together in order to be able to provide those materials to the students, because that is statute.
And speaking of statute, too, one of the items that would not be clear in here is that they take the statute, like Wes is always telling us, take it right out of state statute, put it in the document that we're working with, and then you're trying to work around the statute to make it clear to the people who are going to use it, to the teachers and everybody else. And that's a problem in itself, and I know I'm always asking Wes, can't we change this, this is not clear? It's state statute, nobody can, so that's something you're going to have to face also, to be able to work around statute to make it clear to whoever's using it.
One thing that I share with you, this is, and I'll leave this with you after the, this is a dual enrollment frequently asked questions, and I believe this came out from the Department of Education on 6/24/2013, and I'll share with you as well to answer some of these questions.
Mr. Clutter, I know that this has been asked before, and I know over the years, it's changed a couple of times, on page four and five, number five, a student must pass 10th grade FCAT reading, as well as the end of course exams for Algebra I and Geometry as wonder requirements. But then it jumps down to numbers 10 and 11, where a student must have completed their sophomore year in high school by passing, et cetera, et cetera. Which one? You know, and the other question I have, because my understanding is, I think statute is now number five, or that that was part, because there was some lawsuits, not necessarily at CF, but there was some lawsuits that, basically discrimination lawsuits having to do with age and circumstance, and my question is, if I'm a ninth grader, and I want to ask that I take the FCAT reading, am I not allowed by statute now to take it?
The 10th grade?
The 10th grade? Because I can, I can take an EOC in another subject area.
Can you repeat your question again, please?
Sure. Mr. Simon, the question is, is that in the agreement for dual enrollment, there is, and I think we've talked about this in the past, they've kind of changed and morphed over the years how they establish, how they get a certain level of student. At one time, I believe it was age, another time it became certain courses, and so they've changed that over the years. Now, in number five, it says the student must pass the 10th grade FCAT reading. So my question is, if I'm a ninth grader, and I say, fine, give me the FCAT, the 10th grade FCAT reading, am I entitled by statute to be able to take it?
No.
Okay, why, just so I know.
So in essence, what they've done is they've diminished the opportunity for a ninth grader to participate in dual enrollment by saying that you must take, complete, pass the 10th grade FCAT. You cannot take the FCAT, the 10th grade unless you are scheduled coded as a 10th grader.
So, I can do it with Algebra I, which would be a ninth grade, I can with Geometry as an eighth grader, take an EOC, and I'm by statute permitted to be able to, as a result of, what is it, 7051, the acceleration statute change that we had last year? I'm entitled to ask for other options, but I can't ask for the 10th grade reading at this time.
What about PERT, can you take PERT anytime you choose, or, because PERT typically is given.
Some of us have history with this, don't we, Ms. Bryant? I think what you're implying, here's what has happened in the past, and Mr. Clutter knows this as well as Mrs. Bryant personally, there was an age limitation, there was a challenge to that. It went almost to court, and as a result, they altered that, and they no longer have an age or gender, it was both age and gender.
Age and gender, yes.
Limitation, so, and again, might want to join in, Ms. Balfour on this on the board, so I believe that the intent was, how can we ensure that the student is ready, and that we understand that? And will demonstrate success and not set them up for failure. The 10th grade was put in, and again, this is just in inter-agency agreements for all three counties, and I believe that's Citrus, Marion, Levy. And the question we had was, you know, can you trump that 10th grade requirement? Well, the reality is, you cannot, I cannot as an eighth grader, if I'm an eighth grader, I could be accelerated, possibly, we've not had that happen in our county, I don't think, to ninth grade, language arts, take the ninth grade, and when I'm in ninth grade, and I believe I'm 14 years old, could I take the 10th grade? So that has not happened. Is it possible to some districts do that? Yes, it has not happened, that accelerated pathway for language arts has not been approached.
Language arts becomes the barrier, because you can do it within the mathematics.
It is.
And there are some students.
It just seems a little bit arbitrary to me.
There are some students that maybe, and I don't want to pursue this further, but there are some students that probably are capable, eligible, and may benefit, whose age does a match, and I think what would happen, we probably would probably pursue that individually. Yes, in the past, with that 16, there was always an opportunity for that child and the parent to meet with the board members. One of the things that we had asked is that someone from the district sit in on that meeting as well, so if there is an exception, like the 16 years, again, they're basically assessing that child for maturity, being the college campuses with those courses.
Well, we have historically looked at the individual student's needs, and we, right here in this room, have an example of that with Kaylee. She, in 10th grade, that was the last grade that she attended a public school campus. From that point on, in 11th and 12th, she was at the community college, and I was so proud to see her cross that stage with a high school diploma from Crystal River High School and a degree from CF. And we are here to meet the individual student's needs, so when we can build our curriculum needs around state statute, we always understand that there's going to be somebody that doesn't fit into that same mold, and we work really hard from the front lines, and I'm just, I'm here to say, we've got evidence that we will meet the individual student's needs.
If you look at number 11, that's, I think, Ms. Balfour's address as well.
Yeah. That if I'm on Crystal River's campus, and they're offering the same dual enrollment course, am I going to have that limitation? I'm still going to have that limitation?
You're, oh, I'm sorry, yes, you will. Still have the limitation of those requirements, even if it is on our campus, I thought you were going to kind of get to the other about, if we are offering the dual enrollment on our campus, then we want our students to attend that dual enrollment course, I thought that's what you were going to ask.
Well, I meant that if we're offering it, are we, do we have to keep to this dual enrollment?
The same requirement.
Yeah.
But a student could typically take an AP class instead and still earn college credit.
That's what I was just going to say, that's, and we have freshmen that take the AP dual enrollment all the time, I mean, the AP.
Well, that's a choice, and that's what we're here to do, we want to have all the choices available for the kids.
But they wouldn't have a choice, though, if they do dual enrollment. They have a choice with AP.
Well, they can go AP or dual enrollment, for English, for that college credit, they can go either direction. They choose the path, either dual enrollment or the AP.
But they couldn't, as a freshman, choose that? Or sophomore? They would have, they can choose an AP course, but they cannot choose a dual enrollment.
They cannot choose dual enrollment.
So we do take away that. So they, we do take away that option?
AP, they have that option. And again, we go, the counselors, as she, I'm sure, is, she's had that as a counselor. You have those talented people that come to you that feel that block, and as a counselor, you assess based on their performance what the best route is for them, and we really work hard for that.
But the difference with an AP versus a dual enrollment is with an AP, a college I'm looking at may or may not take that credit, or may not take all of that credit depending on that score. But if I go to a Florida college...
What college are you going to?
Then I'm, I'm going to take that dual enrollment class, that will have to be accepted. Is that correct, Mr. Son?
There are the differences. In AP, again, there's variations, and we post on our website, I always want to plug this commercial, on our Research Committee website, there's a chart that shows acceptance of AP credits by every public-private institution in Florida, post-secondary. AP is different. You get credit. Sometimes that credit is coded to a content or subject area, sometimes it's general level credit. You do not get quality points. When you transfer your dual enrollment classes, you get the credit as aligned to the state of Florida, that post-secondary courses, and you get the quality points. So a student can enter college, if I had 20 credits of AP, I'd go in with 20 credits and I don't have a GPA. If I have, if I have, I think of former students, I've had grandchildren who've gone in with 30 credits, I have a 3.9 GPA, I enter college with a 3.9 GPA. So that's the major difference. I'm not sure if students or parents are aware all the time.
Excellent. Thank you, Son.
Very rarely talk about personal issues here. Both my children, dual enrollment, out of state, private school, did actually get accepted with those courses, all of them from dual enrollment. So again, I think that you hit it on the head, it's those colleges that actually will take those courses.
Absolutely.
And again, that, starting that communication early on is very imperative.
Thank you, Mr. Clutter.
Thank you, sir.
Mark, if you look at page seven, number eight, the last part, it talks about the courses that are to be modified to accommodate variations in student age and/or maturity, but it also talks about the dual enrollment courses that reflect topics that are not typically included in secondary courses, and that some parents may object to the minors. Have we ever had an experience such as that, where we've had the materials that are objectionable?
Yes, we have.
I defer to Mrs. Nobles because again, being in that school environment, she may have that confidence that, so.
We've had several cases where students who took like an art class, a humanities class, where there were, in some cases, at the college, there were nude pictures or something like that that the parents disagreed with, et cetera, and did not want their child to either to study that, and in some cases, it was also some literature that they did not think that it was appropriate that a minor child read, but yet it was the college required reading.
What was the response? How did it settle?
It was one of those situations where, I mean, the college did not change their, their information because that was what had to be. The parents were upset about it. I can actually say I sat in on a parent conference at the college with the parent and the professor, but that didn't budge.
So is that something that can be emphasized out front with a child going into dual enrollment?
That's one of the things that, as the students now sign up for dual enrollment, that's one of the things that we have on our paperwork from the high school, these are the things that you need to be aware of, that the curriculum at the college is not going to change. And in some cases, it may not be reflective of, I mean, the school district doesn't have say-so in the values or whatever else that you would really like to call it, that is the college, and that's not going to change, that is part of the curriculum. And just because a child is of younger age, and that's one of the reasons that often the college actually says that they want students to be of 16 years of age, because you're not only talking about, in some cases, the material, but you're also talking about the wide variety of students that are accepted at the college and have a right to be there, and yet you have a, in some cases, 12, 13-year-old students that they've had apply for admission in the, in the past, and you've got a person sitting there of that age next to someone who is well beyond that. I'll just say it that way.
Safe.
Very safe.
Again, this is another one of the issues in here that really need to be pulled out or clarified, so anyone who gets involved in dual enrollment knows exactly what is happening.
And you also have to realize that there are people who have offended the law that are allowed to go to the college, and in some cases, you have those students in with dual enrollment students. So there is a protection type phase that the college is trying to do, and that's why you'll see some of the things that are written here, is because, you know, you do not have monitoring the hallways and all of those type things at the college when classes change, et cetera. So I mean, this isn't something to try to keep someone out, as it is also that protection phase, that is what we're trying to really look at.
What are the requirements for entering, say, University of Central Florida, or CF, or the minimum requirements for entry? Do you know what they are? They probably vary.
There is a sliding scale that usually, the higher the test score, then the lower the GPA can be, and that's what typically the schools start from. You're typically talking over a 3-point GPA, but the more over a 3.0 GPA that a student has, then the, little bit lower the test score can be. So, you know, if you have a low GPA and a high SAE or ACT or SAT score, then students can get in.
But there is a definite requirement?
Yes, ma'am. There's a grade port requirement going along with SAT, ACT score. They call it a sliding scale. And those GPAs are based only on the academic courses. They are not based upon elected courses added to it. It's usually 18 credit, 18 core courses.
And the students who go into the remediation courses, what's the issue? Do they have a, start out with a lower GPA, are they expected to go up, or do they follow that?
Well, with CF, you're not talking about a GPA type issue as much as usually they have not met one of the requirements. They have a high school diploma, and they may not have had the preparation, they may have chosen not to take, in previous time, it was they didn't take even Algebra or Geometry. Now Algebra and Geometry is a graduation requirement, but they may not have had Algebra II. To get into the state university system, you have to have had Algebra II.
So you're not looking so much as remediation as you are taking Algebra?
And each student's different. Some students cannot score or do not score well on the ACT, SAT, and they're beyond, they're below the scales, scores that are listed here, even in this document.
Is that those are the students who would go into remediation?
Dual remediation.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Nobles. Okay, we need a motion. We've had our discussion, well, we probably need a motion to approve the dual enrollment agreement.
With the addendum.
With the addendum.
On the approval of the dual enrollment agreement between the district's board of trustees and the College of Central Florida, it's just carrying a school board with the attached addendum.
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any further questions or comments?
I did, the attached addendum, and that also, looking at the document and tightening and other bits, opening up some of these conflicts. Is that what we're doing, Mark?
You want me to make some additional changes?
Yes, we can make some changes for clarity, because...
Okay, can, can we get some examples of that so that I can send those on? But sure, yes.
Well, wait a minute. We have to come back to the board.
That's what I want to know, are we making it with that or not?
We would like to hear what those would be.
Yeah, I was just quoting that one on the first page about dual enrollment including remediation in teacher programs, and then you go over to page two and it says, it says on number one, current law allows for any course in the state-wide course numbering system with the exception of remedial courses. So that the statement conflicts with page one. And throughout, there are many non-clear elements that, because we've done it so long, we know what's going to be done, but the actual comping is not clear. Like you were talking, you were pointing out, if you want to go back and argue, point, it's there to argue.
Well, we're adopting a contract today. You want to change the contract?
Yeah, well, it says in here.
Mr. Bradshaw?
No, it says in here that one can adopt it and go back and clarify, I forgot what page that's on, but...
We can always go back.
Oh, it's on the page beside.
But not rewrite. We can, I mean, if you want to change anything, you would have to adopt whatever changes.
You just adopt a new, a new comp term? Page 14, Berks, where Virginia signs. In addition, and deletions can be made at any time upon the mutual agreement of CS President and the District Superintendent. So after signed, it can be made additions or deletions.
That would be something that would be the decision point between the President and the, or CF, whatever it is. Miss Semel, not us. We're adopting this contract as the...
Right, but, but the changes can be made.
Well, then, you probably need to submit them to Miss Semel, see if she agrees with them, and works it out with the President, and I'll be moving next week.
Okay, because as it now stands, I would say, you know, it's not clear, we have too many conclusions here. The idea is acceptable, but the clarity is not here. So if it could not be changed, I would have to say, no, you can't, you can't adopt this because...
So you can always bring something back as a revised and amended articulation agreement to have it revert back to this date.
Okay. And you're suggesting that will work, that we, Miss Semel, you'll...
You're going to submit to me?
Yes, yeah, to get up with Gail, we'll talk about this. And Miss Semel, just for the sake of clarity, so you don't use one paragraph to argue against a whole document, and what you can, like, be reusing, you can use that paragraph to argue against a document. The document's wrong if the paragraph holds up.
I believe they just banned it.
Yeah.
They just get that.
That's true. I think that's true, it is what happened.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Miss Semel, thanks for getting the money back.
Thank you, Miss Semel. And we need to approve new provisions of Florida statute, whatever, whatever, on that EpiPen thing. I knew that was bad when they took it away.
We didn't want it.
We didn't want to take it away. They came to their senses.
Well, kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah. I'm glad it's coming back to us.
Oh, absolutely.
There has been a change, but there's some things that you need to be aware of, and we would like to guide the board's direction and guidance in this. So I turn it over to our new coordinator of Student Services, Kit Hopp.
All right. Good afternoon. We are bringing before you a request to consider the new provisions of Florida statute 1002.20, specifically concerning epinephrine auto-injections. The statute now allows for schools to stock epinephrine for students. If I may, there are five provisions that they are, have included in the statute now that is what we're asking for you to look at, to see where you want us to go from here. The first one is an order from a licensed physician. The second one is a protocol for administration, how the epinephrine would be administered. Number three is to identify a wholesale distributor. Number four, identify a secure location at each school for storage. And the last one is to train the staff appropriately. So what we would like the board to consider are these new provisions. If you have any questions, which I'm sure you all are going to have some questions, I'm going to defer any of the questions that you have to Jessica Hoag, who is our student health specialist. She will be able to enlighten you a lot better than I can. So if you have questions, I will bring her up here and let her answer them for you.
We were horrified when this was taken away, because you know how serious the situation is against use of pen, and this is really good to see it coming back in. Do you want a motion to just say we will consider, how do you want that?
Sure.
We need a motion.
And then consideration.
I think it's just direction, I think they just want direction.
That's what I'm saying, a motion and direction.
Because there's now these little parties that have been happening.
We would have to go back through the policy change. We have a policy that addresses this board policy, and we'll go, we'll start that process.
If you want to move forward with it.
At this point, it's just a first read, so it's... Right.
Correct.
Because now you have to have a doctor's protocol, it has to be under a protocol written by a doctor, it's like a secure, to the secure location, they put all these steps in before you're able to...
So Wes, if our, if our staff, those trained, as previously I believe they were, and are we still not able to administer that?
So he'll be able to talk about it.
We still can, and they do not have, but they don't have to have a doctor's prescription.
Because it's going to be under a doctor's protocol, they're going to be trained on.
Okay, that's what I wanted, just to make sure that, that clarity, so...
And it went back to where the child had to have his own kid.
Right, that is what was...
And that's what scares us all, you know.
Which, which then they basically said they had to have them around campus as well.
Yeah.
I took them on field trips. I remember the day.
Did we buy them before?
I'm sorry?
We bought them before, we had stock and...
We did, for a while. Jessica would go in there. All right, Ms. Powers has made the motion, and we have a second?
At least, if we didn't have to do a motion, just to approve.
It says to approve.
It doesn't need to be approved. You just give us direction, move forward, we'll bring it back.
Move forward.
Make it happen.
Okay. I just wanted to tell you too that the DOE is a work group to provide direction to the schools on putting this legislation into place, but they won't meet, they've asked me to sit on that committee, but it won't happen until about August 20th.
Well, we're glad you're on the committee, because you know a lot more than they want.
As far as projecting, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but just looking at long-range goals here for this, for implementing this, when do you foresee actually having these pins in, on the campus?
Well, we would have to identify the wholesale distributor, and there is a corporation, Milan Corporation, that will provide a free EpiPen to all of the schools. However, it's a one-time, it's kind of a hook, because then once you have, they're in there, they have a one-to-two-year shelf life, so you'd have to purchase them after that. So once that was established, we, and we'd have to have a physician, which we have talked to care here, and Dr. Dallas has been willing to provide us with a protocol and a standing order. So as soon as we have direct, you know, we're getting all the pieces into place, but I think some of, I tried to get some feedback from the other counties to see if they were, and everybody's kind of at a stalemate right now, because they're waiting on the DOE to give them some sort of direction.
Do you think it'll be January possibly? You don't want to stick your name on any...
No, because I'm not sure what, it'll be soon, because people, they went into late July first, so everybody's waiting on being in for us.
We do.
We currently have them on campus, but they are child, student-specific. And then they took that privilege away from us using one of the kids.
Wes, do we need to have a policy before we can have them purchased and begin this, or can we give direction to the superintendent to move forward?
We make policy changes when the law changes last.
That's, that's what I'm saying, because our policy doesn't currently have it. And that's going to take us 90 days, isn't it?
I'll get Mr. Dixon, I'll start to go ahead and change that so that when we get the protocol and everything, we can actually probably do it in less than 90 days if you don't workshop it. You just workshop it in the meeting and approve it for advertising, and go out 30, 40 days later, or whatever, or their next meeting, once it's advertised. I'm okay with doing that.
That'd be great.
Instead of normally workshopping it and bringing it to a meeting and go approve for advertising? Because there probably won't be that big of a change that you can't do it in one sitting.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. All right, attorney legal matters?
None.
None?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to go first with our board members' business, because I've got to get Tony Wall, if you elect him, on the value adjustment board, take one of those and pass him down. He has applied to serve on as a clerk to our value adjustment board, and Mr. Dixon is here to answer any questions you might have.
We're not sure if he applied or tried to beg you.
Well, we don't care. You've got an application. We've got an application with his name on it.
You caught one.
The citizen member has to be a business spaceholder, might have, didn't have to own space, or he or she doesn't have to own space, they have to own or lease space for the business, and they can't be a relative, a immediate family member of anyone on the taxing authority, the Ford County Commissioners will screw there. It's hard to find somebody like that. The Ford County Commissioner's citizen representative only has to be a homeowner, so they're very easy to find, but we have had a hard time soliciting applicants. And Mr. Wall, I don't know if he's present, he's not here, but he has submitted his name and asked for your endorsement.
All right, on the approval of Tony Wall as the citizen representative on the value adjustment board.
Thank you, Ms. Deutschman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Praise the Lord. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, I'm going to, come on, Matt. I'm going to recess our special meeting and go to the workshop. Want a five-minute break? Okay, five minutes.